Hi, I'm Mary Wingsors and I'm here today with the candidates for the school board on another episode of It's Your Choice. With me today are Nancy Hendricks. Thank you, welcome to come.
Thank you for having me.
Glenn Douglas.
Thanks.
Todd Jenkus?
Jenkus.
Jenkus, I'm sorry Todd. And John Robinson.
Hi Mary, thanks for doing this.
Yeah, thank you for coming. There are four seats, there are four, I'd love, I bet you guys would love that there were four seats. There are two seats available and there are four folks running, so we wanted them to have an opportunity to introduce themselves to you, although John, many of you should be familiar with the audience because you've been out and about, and let you know why they're running. So I'm going to turn it over to Nancy, sorry to put you on the spotlight first.
Sure, that's quite all right, that's quite all right. I'm running for the school board because I'm passionate about kids, I'm passionate about education, I love this school district, I love the great things that we're doing and that we're accomplishing, and I want to be part of it.
And you have children in the school district?
I do, I have a 10-year-old, he turned 10 this week, which I found fairly shocking.
Double digits?
That's exactly what he said, Mary, I'm so cool now that I have double digits. So yes, I have, I have a child at Matthew Thornton, yes.
Cool, that's great.
Yes.
And John?
Well, I've been on the school board for three years, I was on the budget committee for a year before that, and I spent a weekend in the state legislature filling out an unexpired term. I believe in the schools, I believe in the things that we've been able to accomplish, all the opportunities that we're able to offer, and the great results that we've had. Better than 90% graduation rates, lower than one quarter of 1%, dropout rates, huge numbers of kids going on to four-year, two-year, and vocational training programs or the military. And I'd just like to see through some of the things that we've started and spend the next three years getting them to a state of completion where I can hand off to somebody else and know that things will be in good hands.
Thank you. And Glenn Douglas?
I've been a resident since 1996. Came here, we rented a little place on Candle Pond for a while, mostly just to be close to my job, we heard London Derry had good school systems. I guess what I'm in it for is, I've always worked in the high-tech field and I work with a lot of people from other countries, and I see the education systems they have there and the value of the education, and I really, really think education is important. However, I think there's a couple of things coming up that the school district is going to have to deal with. One of them is the decline in enrollment. I read an article in Union Leader yesterday, they say Pinkerton expects enrollment to decline for the next 10 years. And they are questioning how they can maintain the same level of service with less people. Pinkerton has the ability to draw from other towns. London Derry unfortunately doesn't, at least not now. So we are going to have to make some decisions on what needs to be done and when, and I'd like to be a part of it.
And Todd?
Sure, thank you, Mary. Just a little background on myself, I've been a budget committee member for the past two budget seasons, including the current one. And this current budget season has been a brutal one, as we all know. I believe that the education of our children as a community is a fundamental key to the future success, not only for the local level, but also as a nation. And to Glenn's point, I also have had a long career of international business management, managing large programs all around the world, and in doing so, I've seen exactly what the competition is like worldwide. The education of the students overseas is outstanding, and our children need to be educated in a way that goes well beyond the fundamentals. They need to be educated in a way that in fact prepares them to be not only, you know, doers and thinkers, but really solid problem solvers, entrepreneurial in spirit, flexible, able to be very agile in the future marketplace. So, and the reason being is, they're preparing for jobs, and we've heard it before in various meetings, they're preparing for jobs that, jobs that don't exist yet, in technologies that don't exist yet. So they're preparing for things that they don't even know what they're preparing for yet. So not only do you need to educate them with the fundamentals, you need to educate them to be flexible and prepared for that fluid situation that the future economy holds for them. So, why am I running? I'm running because I like to bring, I want to bring a balanced approach with a fiscal responsible approach. I want to make sure that we're balancing the taxpayer needs with the educational needs, the state mandates, that some of which we all know are not funded fully. So we have to be creative, we have to make sure that we have the fiscal mindset, we have the educational, the best possible educational benefits of the children in mind with that future economic requirement that's coming their way. It's a freight train, it's coming, so we need to best prepare for them, but do so in a fiscal manner, and that's what I'm here to try to do.
Okay, so when we look at our town, and we compare it to something like Pinkerton or like Derry, they are saying that their enrollment is going to decline over the next 10 years. Our enrollment is declining, or has been declining for the past couple of years, and we can look through who comes to kindergarten and, you know, project that through the high school. But we can't project what's going to happen with something like Woodmont Orchard's, where the buildings may go up, houses may go up, apartments may go up, people may come in. So, how do we balance the, you know, the future possibilities against what we have right now for expectations?
If I can take a swing at that, we've been seeing declines in our student population over the past several years, and based on that, we've reduced the number of teachers in various elementary grades, we've reduced an entire half a team in middle school, and there's anticipation that a year or so from now, we'll probably be reducing another half a team in the middle school. As things, as enrollment goes down into high school, we've been looking at programs that are less, well, I shouldn't say programs, we've been looking at courses that we can consolidate sections of or eliminate to reduce the headcount there. So we've been on top of it as much as we can be without impinging on certain criteria that we hold dear, like the number of kids in an elementary school classroom, like protecting the program offerings that we have in the high school, the excellent AP courses, the wide breadth of electos in English Science, any number of things. But in terms of Woodmont, in terms of expansion of 93, they're several years out. Their impact on our budgeting now, I think, has more to do with ensuring that we maintain the level of quality and the level of services, and do it in a way that can scale with the community. If things are getting somewhat smaller, we contract some, if things are getting somewhat bigger, we expand some. In terms of if Woodmont ever gets built, and how many kids ever wind up living in Woodmont, I think that's secondary to the housing market coming back, and how many people who might have lived in London Derry's three and four-bedroom houses with kids who have graduated out now are going to be able to sell those to younger families who will come in with three and four kids and move into the schools.
You know, one of the things that I love about this district is the fact that we have a very, very thoughtful board and a very, very thoughtful superintendent. And I've watched them for several years, and before I moved to London Derry with my family, I actually toured schools around the state. Some of you may know that I sat on a school board in the Jaffrey Ridge District, and we were considering new facilities in our district, so I had an opportunity to tour many schools, and schools in this district were some of them. And so I've watched this board, before we moved here, I actually came to a deliberative session and watched, you know, as a spectator, this board.
Well then, I guess we were down to 122 right here.
Yeah, exactly. And they let me in, which is a good thing. But I will tell you that what has impressed me is the level that they work of respect that they have with each other, and they work with each other in terms of enrollment is growing, enrollment is shrinking, these are the things that have to happen. I agree that preparing for Woodmont will create a challenge in the district, but our superintendent works, I think, very well with our administrators, and they sit down and they go through this budget, it's a painstaking process, is it not?
No.
It's a painstaking process. And I believe, you know, having watched Superintendent Greenberg for quite some time now, as enrollment increases, he knows where he needs to add in terms of programs, services, faculty, staff. And I had a conversation with him earlier this week, and he tells me, you know, enrollment is on the decline, and we can expect it to be on the decline for the next four to five years, which will indeed create challenges as we move forward in our district with respect to staffing. But they always get the job done. So planning for Woodmont, I think certainly as we start to see that grow futuristically, I believe that the superintendent will watch that, and he and his administrators will make those changes as need be. That's my feeling.
As far as Woodmont, I think there's a big, big unknown with Woodmont. I mean, right now, Woodmont is saying 60 units a year. They're not really telling us what this and that and the economy is. I think Woodmont sounds great, honestly, I don't know how they're going to pull it off, because I see a lot of empty buildings. I see a lot of driveways that are empty that haven't been snowblowed for six months. The thing I see is, we need to look at the future, we have the buildings and the capacity to expand a fair amount, I mean, we've already dropped several hundred students in the past. But some of the things I think we need to look at is, maybe we don't need to do this or do that. For instance, the school board discussed closing a school if population of the school drops to 4,400 people. And now they're discussing repaving Matthew Thornton's parking lot, repaving this, redoing the track. The cost of the track and the overrun of the track could have paid for a lot of teachers. Right now, we're having 87 aides and teachers that are being cut. I think someone needs to say, do we want to do the track, do we need to do the track, or do we want to keep teachers in the school? And just to get everything out there, what I forgot to mention in the beginning, is my wife is a teacher's aide, she's in third grade, she's been there for 12 years. And I don't really understand how we'll provide the same services eliminating those aides. I know a little bit more about what goes on in there because of who my wife is. And we always hear, keep the services, but some of these extras, I really have to question, and I think people need to ask, why are we doing this? Can we get by for a year or two without dropping $250,000 to repave something that's not so bad?
Just as a point of clarification, the track was done last year. So the question of whether we do the track or we retain classroom aides never really came up, because the track money was committed and spent and utilized in a different fiscal year than the aide question.
I understand that it was done last year, but my, what I'm looking at is when you see hard times coming, and we all knew that the economy was starting to crash, some people started, you know, we're not going out to dinner, we're not doing the vacation, what if? I think we need to look ahead and say, well, what if it doesn't get better? What if enrollment declines? Do we want a new parking lot in a school that could be closed? Matthew Thornton is the oldest school, needs the most repairs, needs new sprinkler systems.
I don't think there's any, I don't think there's any chance that Matthew Thornton is going to be closed. I think that one of the things that you look at when you consider what's being done in terms of reduced enrollment and classroom space, first off, you have to look at the distribution. The fact that Matthew Thornton may lose 100 kids doesn't mean that Matthew Thornton loses four classrooms. Those kids could be distributed across 25, 30 classrooms, three kids in each. So maybe we can reduce a classroom or two without having to, without having a greater number of kids in a class than we want to. But even if we did that, then you're looking at questions like busing. Do you want to, do you want to have kids on school buses for 45 minutes or an hour coming from the fringes? Just logically, if you take out Matthew Thornton, then let's use Pillsbury Road as a dividing line between north and south. Do you really want to bus kids from Pillsbury all the way down to south or all the way up to north? And what does the community want, and what is the community willing to spend in terms of all those trade-offs? I don't think the question of Matthew Thornton closing is something that will happen anytime in the foreseeable future.
Has that been discussed somewhere? I watch, I watch these board meetings pretty consistently, and I haven't seen that discussed. Has that been discussed publicly?
There was a discussion, and I don't have the date, but it was within, I'd say, three months. The question was asked, and I think Todd actually brought it up.
I know for a fact it was asked, because I'm the one who asked it, it was a budget.
And the superintendent said he would feel comfortable closing a school at 4,400. Were it 4980, maybe John, somewhere around there?
4984.
So we're, we're not, we're not that far away. Pinkerton is projecting to lose 500 high school students over the next 10 years. The article didn't mention elementary K. Alls I'm saying is, there's things that you need to look at, and when, when you hear that, and then three months later you hear, we're going to repave this, that to me brings up a question.
You know, the parking lot though, just does not serve Matthew Thornton, it serves the high school too. There are many events that happen at the high school where people park at the, Matthew Thornton parking lot.
As far as the parking lot, when the parking lot came up a few years ago, all the kids were super excited, because they thought they were getting the plateau, which is the dirt parking lot on the other side paved. And I actually kind of thought so too. And then they tore up the gym parking lot, and the kids were like, well, we still have the plateau. But that project was 100% over budget. The track was 100% over budget.
Okay, are we talking about the Matthew Thornton parking lot, which is coming up, or the gym parking lot?
I'm going back.
Okay.
Mary said that the parking lot is shared, which it is, the old parking lot is shared. Matthew Thornton's parking lot is pretty much just Matthew Thornton.
But isn't, no Matthew, whenever we have any town events, whenever we have any high school events, people use the Matthew Thornton parking lot.
Correct.
But, you know, that's neither here nor there, it's not, you're speaking something about a daily basis, and, you know, is that need definitely there, because it's going to be used on a daily basis? But aren't they pulling out a tank?
Oil tank.
An oil tank? And isn't it economically feasible while they're doing that to do this at the same time? And wasn't that the idea?
Yeah, there's. I think it's important to note that, in fact, going through this whole balanced approach and funding and so forth, we've brought up the track, we're bringing up the parking lot. There's a maintenance trust fund that was established for these purposes, and by doing this in a schedule, and it's a very long-term planned-out schedule, I don't know how many years it goes out, but it goes out, I think I saw it, to 2017 minimum. It goes out, and the purpose of doing this is maintaining your investment in the capital of this town. You have capital investment in this town, i.e. the schools and all the infrastructure associated with it. By having a maintenance trust fund that planned out, yes, the track went over budget. Certain things do go over budget. It's hard sometimes, you get into something, and it's debatable whether or not the timing of that was appropriate, but everybody didn't have a crystal ball and know how deep a recession was going to go, et cetera. But the maintenance trust fund, the establishment of that, the increase of it, and I believe it was the previous budget season, they purposely did that and allocated this so that these funds were appropriated to do these certain projects. And by doing that, you limit the amount of debt the town has to take on in the form of bond issues, right? When you issue debt, you're going to carry that debt for many, many years. And I know a number of years goes by, and people will start to wonder, why are we paying all this debt? Well, that was five years ago. We had this infrastructure issue we had to take care of, South School, you know, time goes by, reduction in enrollment happens after the fact. It's easy to look back and say, oh, we should have. But looking forward, I think lessons learned, we're going to be a little bit more with the mindset of challenging ourselves and really vetting out, to Glenn's point, and it's a valid point, is we need to vet these things out, and is it appropriate? If we don't spend this money this year, and maybe hold off for the what-if next year, maybe we vet those things out a little bit better going forward, and I'm all for that. Have the discussion, make sure that we vet it out. So if we do it, great, we know why we did it. And in defense of what happened, they did vet it out to a certain extent, but I don't think anybody realized to what extent the recession was going to impact as many people and as deeply as it really did. I know I didn't.
If I may add just one more thing on the question of school closings, I think if you look at the school infrastructure that currently exists, the superintendent was far more likely to be alluding to the possibility of, well, do we need to have a freestanding kindergarten serving the entire town? If enrollment goes down in the middle, in the elementary grades, does that free up enough classrooms that we can have community kindergarten in the schools the kids will ultimately be matriculating into? If that happens, the possibility is perhaps we keep LEAP and other programs in Moose Hill, and we look at whether there is additional space in Moose Hill for things such as administrative offices, so that we can avoid the proposal to re-engineer and rebuild the district offices that currently exist. If there is any school that would be looked at in terms of reallocation of space, I think it's far more, excuse me, far more likely to be Moose Hill than Matthew Thornton, north or south.
I actually personally, excuse me, I actually personally did a study going into the budget season, to see what if we reduced, what if we increased the number of students per classroom, to, with the intent in my mind, just to see if it's possible to maybe eliminate one of the elementary schools. In fact, that was the question that I brought up, it was relative to that, and there was another discussion that was also along those lines. But on paper, you can get real close, but sometimes things on paper really don't make a lot of sense when you start looking at just how tight things are going to get, the what-if. Yeah, we're in a lull right now, enrollment's down. To reinvest rather than maintain, maintain, yeah, we have excess capacity, but to John's point, yeah, you certainly could consolidate some into the schools, free up some capacity, certainly Moose Hill. Maybe you actually eliminate, to John's great point of, hey, maybe we, because we've been talking about administrative offices for a number of years, and year upon year, it's like, not this year.
Right, and so to Glenn's point, that's something that does get pushed out, that administrative offices. But when we were talking about bringing in revenue, we already have, we have like three sources of revenue that could be brought in. We have programs in this, in our school district that would allow other towns to send their students to our school, and they have to pay to bring, to send their students, right, to our schools. The, you know, the program that we have at Matthew Thornton for the autistic population, the programs that we have at South School for emotionally handicapped students. So even though the numbers may be declining in our, in our town, we have an opportunity to bring some more students in with that. And to, say you close a school and then you move all those kids into that, you know, to make it tight into those other two schools, you might lose that opportunity.
We're in the realm of hypotheticals, but, you know, as it is, we're in a cooperative situation in that a number of our students from LHS go to the programs at Alvern or the programs at Manchester School of Technology. We had a number of students from Hudson graduate from the Adult Ed program in January. We do have some students tuitioned in, but the thing, the thing with tuitioning students in is, yes, they pay to come, but there's a difference between revenue and margin. They, they may pay their freight, their, their way to be here, but that doesn't mean that we're getting a bunch of money that we can go to offset our own expenses, our own tax rate. So that's largely close to a wash.
Oh, okay.
Just to jump in, one of the other reasons I'd really like to get involved is, right now, there's discussion going on. John, obviously, school board, has a little bit more knowledge than the rest of us, because he's spent every two weeks.
You get immersed in it for a while.
You get a little bit of information. I don't think, having attended, I've been following this since 2006, I have a website off to the side that follows town politics. I don't necessarily think a lot of people know what's going on. Repaving Matthew Thornton, if you're going to pull out the tank, makes sense. Maybe not the whole parking lot, maybe half now, half later, but if the community doesn't know that, they don't know what's coming up. Years ago, when Matthew Thornton, I'm sorry, Moose Hill was presented to the voters, it was presented as possibly the fourth elementary school. Then we started putting the additions on, and I actually asked, I said, well, what happened to the fourth elementary school? We're going to make that an elementary school and then bring all the kids closer to the other schools. I said, well, Moose Hill was, was built smaller, and it is, if you've ever been in there.
Oh, it is.
You feel really tall, I mean, I'm kind of tall anyway, but you feel really tall, because everything's really low.
Right.
And it was more or less designed for smaller.
Small people, yes.
As Nate says, the little people.
Right.
Which is, is great, but sometimes when I sit in a school board meeting, it's very, the board knows, some of the board members have been on the board for a long time, and no fault to them, but when you've been doing something for a long time, sometimes you don't understand what it's like when you're out there. And it makes perfect sense to you, but if you don't explain it or have people coming and ask questions, like, well, why are we doing this? And then you get the scare tactics. I wasn't bringing up the, we're going to close Matthew Thornton, I was just bringing up, it was discussed.
Right.
And it surprised a lot of people, including myself, I was like, really? I mean, that's big. Because even if you close it, you're stuck.
That's right.
You're stuck with the building.
Yes.
It's like what people have been saying around the community lately. Any situation that any business is in, a manager is always going to have a lifeboat list, and he's going to know what gets caught in situation X, Y, and Z. So of course we do, and, you know, of course we know what would happen if our population got to the point where we had a completely surplus elementary school for sale.
And we actually, in the budget process, in the budget committee meetings with the school district, we actually had the conversation, and by vetting that conversation out, it quickly came to light that it makes no sense to close Matthew Thornton's school. But you at least discuss it, what if, right? And then you realize, no, that, that makes no sense, these are the reasons why. You have enrollment down, yes, on paper you can get kind of close, but you know, when you start factoring a lot of the other great things that that school does, as well as all the rest of the school system, you need to have that school there, and to close that would just make no sense. First of all, you, you would then violate state requirements for the maximum number of students in elementary school, which is 25 per classroom. Correct me if I'm wrong.
I think that's for one set of grades. It varies from, from primary, secondary, and higher, but yeah, that is one of them.
Great, but you were violating that, that requirement, whatever, 25 or whatever that number was, when we, when we worked out.
You know, I think you're right, I think it is 25.
For elementary?
K through.
K to two, I think.
I think it's K to three.
Okay.
K to three, okay. Well, you know, when you realize that, at least you had the dialogue, you realized, okay, yep, we brought it up, we vetted it out, we had the discussion, but you know what, take that off the table now, because we realized that's, that just wouldn't make sense. And I, to Glenn's point, you need to have the dialogue, you need to have that open conversation, because a lot of people who are out there, unless you explain it and say, this is the subject matter, this is what we're doing, this is why we're doing it, right, wrong, or indifferent, you agree, you disagree, you at least have the discussion, you vet it out, and then you're, that balanced, objective approach is kind of what I'm all about.
Can I add one thing there?
Certainly.
Just, just to stipulate, I think you said your wife is a teacher's aide, I know, I know your wife is a teacher's aide, my wife is a teacher, I'm sure you've been in classrooms. Anybody at this table who thinks that 25 kids in first grade is a manageable load for one classroom teacher, please raise your hand.
I know, it's crazy.
Let the rest of you show.
You know, I subbed in our district for.
You're seriously not raising your hand, are you?
No, I had a point to make.
Oh, okay.
I'm on pursuit.
Be careful, you've got to do a lot of this.
It's my turn now.
So that was it.
I actually subbed in our district for two years, and you're right, 25 students in any classroom is a lot for one teacher to manage. And, you know, quite frankly, and I've had numerous conversations with the superintendent about, you know, reducing staff and, and reducing and getting, or, you know, not having assistants in our classroom, and that really worries me, you know, just for this population reason alone. But he assures me that that will not compromise the integrity and the quality of the education that's being delivered to our students. You know, at the elementary level, we're still going to have, we're going to share assistance now, is that correct, John? Based on hours that are, that are needed? And there are also co-teachers in our elementary classrooms, which I find remarkable. which I find remarkable. In fact, when I toured our schools and noted that we had assistants and two teachers, I was speechless. I went back to our superintendent and I said, have we ever considered this in our district? And he said, you know, we've talked about it, but our district would never support that. And I'm sure that's true. So I know it's, it's painful to have these conversations. Nobody wants to reduce staff. I'm with you, I'm all about, you know, open discussions. I think that we have to somehow find a way to reach out to, to our community even more and invite parents in. I'm always shocked when I say to people, well, did you read, you know, such and such is happening in our district? And they go, no, I had no idea. And, and I don't know how you reach out more than we already are. Maybe making more of an effort to have public forums might be one way. I don't know.
I'd love to, but I don't see how. I mean, just for the record, I'm, I think people who have been to the meetings will agree. I'm the guy who usually stops a presentation and says, hey, we're talking in jargon and academic speak.
Yeah, exactly.
And can we, can we explain this out?
Questions are good.
Exactly, and I can attest to that. I've seen John do it on a number of occasions.
You had a point.
As far as the class size, you know, when, when we were all younger, classes were different. Clearly, the school districts deal with a whole completely new set of rules or whatever, texting and phones and media and parents working both jobs and. But as far as the aides, and like John said, you know, my wife's an aide, Todd's wife is an aide, I really do wonder if that is where we need to cut. Or should we have cut other places? There's a lot that goes on in those classrooms. For instance, I was going to set up a meeting to talk to my daughter's teacher, and she's going, scheduled a meeting between nine and one. And I said, well, that sounds odd, that's when school happens. Well, she has coverage in the classroom, which means an aide or this, if that aide is now gone, and she's second grade, so that aide probably wouldn't be gone. But in the, in the other grades, what do you do when you don't have an aide? And there's a lot that they do.
In terms, in terms of coverage, it could be that that's a pullout period for PE or music or something like that, where one of the specialized teachers in phys ed, music, reading, something, one of those disciplines takes over the class for a while, even takes them to the music room or, or the gym or something. But in terms of cutting aides, believe me, I didn't want to see that happen either. It's sort of the least bad of a bunch of bad choices, at least in my opinion. Because, yeah, we could have cut, we could have cut other things. But what we look to do is make the cuts that would have the least impact on student-facing services and opportunities and programs. Not saying that they won't have any impact, because clearly it will. But it was the opinion of the board, and I think of the budget committee and of the people who have spoken to us, including yourself, and I don't mean to misrepresent you, tell me if I am, that this was a year where we just had to make some really significant cuts in step with what the economy was. And if cutting aides turns out to be something that has a profound impact or a serious impact, I'm sure that a future board will consider putting it back and going to the voters and saying, hey, can we have the money? Or voters, let's discuss this, what do you want to, what do you want to trade off? This year, that's where the trade-off came. In future years, it could be somewhere different.
As far as investing, it was mentioned, investing in infrastructure. There's a lot of aides in the schools now that have been there for a long time.
Right.
The current decision to cut the aides down is down to two hours. I know a lot of the aides are already looking to go other places. Two hours a day, just really, it's not worth it. You spend more time getting ready, driving, than you actually spend in the classroom. You're gonna lose a lot of one-on-one. I know the teacher my wife used to work for, she retired a couple of years ago. But when she was moving here, my wife was moving here because they worked together for 10 years and they knew. So to bring the aides back in two years, you might not be bringing back the same people.
A lot of institutional memory goes away.
You're going to spend the next five years, you know, readjusting to a new person.
Well, what troubles me about losing the aides in the classroom is the way the reading program is structured. And having been in the classroom, you know, the, the reading groups are broken up into thirds. And so the regular teacher has a group, and, and one of the assistants has another group, and the other teacher has another group. So I'm concerned that without the aide, there are going to be, certainly be more children in each group. And I talked about this at the public budget hearing. I'm concerned about those children that are right on the cusp, that need just a little extra support. Are we still going to capture them if they need some reading assistance? The superintendent assures me that we will, but, I mean, I'm worried about that. It's a complete restructuring on how we deliver.
See, through, through this budget process, there was a lot of trade-offs that, that were discussed. My wife, who is a teacher's aide, is probably gonna be one of the.
The cuts?
Cuts, so she, she and I have some interesting dialogue. But, you know, I, I go into a process and I try to be objective and balanced. And even if that means a little impact on the home front, nobody can accuse me of trying to protect anybody. But you just need to, to make sure that not only are you considering the parents of the students and the students, but there's also that third part of the stool, the third leg of the stool, and that's the taxpayers in general, who, whether it's a business or, or the, the people who've lived in town for 30 years, they still have the large house, the kids have moved on. They're, they also have a, a large tax bill that they have to consider. And we need to look at all that. Cuts need to be made. I think this ended up probably being the lesser of, of the evils. I know in the classroom that my wife works in, there are no, there are not two teachers. There's a teacher, and then there are two aides. And I believe that's more the norm in all the classrooms within the district. You have one teacher and one or two aides. And some of those aides may be morning or afternoon, depending on the situation in the grade and so forth.
Maybe it's at the higher level, because my son is in fourth grade and there are two teachers in his classroom.
Well, there may be a teacher in there because there may be students with special needs in there. So it might be that there's a special ed teacher and a regular ed teacher.
Well, I think that's true. But I'm, I'm hearing, at least based on what I've heard from his principal and his teachers, when I went in for parent-teacher conferences, they're starting to share the responsibilities, which I happen to think is, is good.
Right, at the middle school, we have co-teaching.
Yes, 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 I'm aware of that, yeah.
One thing that, well, first off, I want to stipulate. I had the great pleasure of working with Todd's wife, that's how I met Todd, actually, when we were working on an enrichment cluster at South School. That was a program where every Friday afternoon for five weeks, kids could choose optional elective that appealed to their interests, and either a teacher or a community volunteer would, would teach it. And this was radio production, and we did a radio show every year. And she was great, she was wonderful. I can see how she'd be a great asset to any teacher. But one other thing that comes into the equation here is we acknowledge rightly the excellence of our superintendent and the, the quality of our principals and our administration. And in all honesty, when the principals and the administration say that the aides are valuable, but can we do without them if we have to, yes. I, as a marketing communications writer and radio engineer, have to listen to that and say, well, I might have some trepidation about removing these aides or not paying for them. But if I've got a principal who says, I'd rather have X than the aides if I have to make the choice, and I'm in a situation where I believe we have to make the choice, that gets a certain amount of credence.
Okay, so the question I wanted to ask, and, you know, I'm, I'm a teacher in the school district, so do you think that something like this, where the aides are a hot topic, I mean, people feel like they're the support, the backbone of the school, do you think that that's what they choose to cut because they know that'll bring the most people out to, you know, to talk against that? Don't cut that, find something else? Or, you know, haven't, we haven't really seen that huge amount.
Yeah, well, if, if that was the strategy, it's been a dismal failure.
Right, right.
There's been no discussion, even at the board. Well, yes, Nancy did bring it up on, on the reading, but I was, I was actually at the same meeting. And I, I actually thought there was going to be two public hearings. I was confused. The town has multiples, and I, I thought, well, you know, there's no one here. They're gonna see what the final proposal is, and they'll all be back next time. And then they moved the question to the ballot, and I was sitting there scratching my head saying, I guess I won't talk about the aides because I just missed it.
Yeah, that was discussed in early meetings in November.
I certainly hope that no one. Bring 499 friends to the deliberative and we can have a great discussion about it.
It has been brought up, that how do you get people here? Cut the band director, cut, cut this, this, and this. If the school board is actually putting that out, or the town on the other side is putting that out, that's just wrong. We need people to discuss it. We don't need to be putting things out that says, this is all the bad that's gonna happen just to get people there. And a lot of times, I've been pushing for years to get people to the deliberative session, years and years and years. But when you walk into that, new people coming in, I'm like, wow, what's going on?
They have no idea.
I've had people sit in town meeting that I've begged, please come. And they look at me and they say, what just happened? And I say, I don't know, I've been here for seven years, and I don't know what happened.
I know how soundbites work, so just to interject, we're not cutting the band director.
I know.
I know you know.
Because there would already be a crowd outside.
Pitchforks and torches.
I'm just saying, those things shouldn't.
Well, and I don't think that they do in this town, seriously. I mean, I think that some things are discussed, like you said, John, there is a cut list. There is a, you know, if I have to throw something, right, if I have to throw something overboard, this is what's gonna go. And I, I don't think you can be running a town or running a school district and not have an idea of if something has to be cut. So should the town just suck it up, though, and pay the, and pay the tax bill and keep the, you know, the aides or, or not? You know, I mean, where do we draw that line?
I think the line has been drawn, I think it had to be drawn. I support that line on the budget committee, we, we voted to support that. It's, it's going to have some pain. The services offered are basically the same. The level of service has yet to be determined as to the impact. Do I believe there's gonna be an impact? You bet. Do I think we can get over it? I think so, I hope so, we will see. And in the future, perhaps, if there's such a dramatic impact and the economy turns around and we have more tax revenues coming in and from various sources, maybe not from the, the actual residents, but more from other, maybe, you know, the other projects in town in the future at some point, generate a lot more tax revenue, then maybe we can do something different. If you look at the individual tax rate by town, a tax cost, excuse me, cost per student by town, Londonderry still falls lower than the average of the state. In fact, I, I could quote some numbers here, just to give you an idea. The average cost per student in Londonderry is $11,059. This is the latest statistic. The average for the state is $11,746. You have towns that are lower than us? You bet. Hudson is $8,890. Other lower ones happen to be ones with more industry. I'm not sure if there's a correlation there or not. Another note to say that, and not to toot Londonderry's horn a little more is.
Go ahead.
The, the state average.
Do you mind?
The state average from '07 through '08, all right, has increased 5.5% from '08 to present. Londonderry's increase from '08 to present has been 5%. So we're running about half a percent less. So you're seeing this trend line from the state level widening away from the increases of what Londonderry's doing. What that indicates to me statistically and financially is, okay, we're doing a better job at keeping our costs down, even though it doesn't feel that way. When you look at the state average increases over that same period of time, it's increasing more than what Londonderry's increase has been.
And I think that, oh, go ahead.
Sorry. I had an online conversation shortly, a short, this morning about cost per student. Actually, the 11,000 seem high, because I believe the state-approved numbers are like 96, 98.
There are number ways of calculating it.
And that's what I was gonna say.
This is all-inclusive, all-inclusive.
This is budget divided by students.
Bingo.
And like I told the person this morning, I said, we have just under 5,000 people, we have a $63,222 million budget. If you do the math, it's like 12,6 per student.
This is right off.
Simple math, you know, just everything we need to have a school. And I know there's lots of things that go into it.
This is right off a state website.
The other thing I'd like to say is I, I disagree with the, the line has been drawn and, and the decision has been made. The deliberative session, anything can change. Now, in years past, we've been lucky to get maybe 130, maybe 122. You can't amend anything unless there's 500 people there. There has been a tremendous push from a number of organizations to get well over 500 people. The school is actually providing babysitting for the deliberative session.
Yep, the school is also holding a play the same night.
And Matthew Thornton has their father-daughter dance.
We can go into that if you like. Glad I don't mean to interrupt, are you finished? Okay, one thing that I want to say about the deliberative session, yes, absolutely. I've, I've said this from the, from the board, I've said it in writing. The budget belongs to the voters, the budget belongs to the district. It's true that there's a quorum at the deliberative session that says you need a threshold of 500 people before you can, before you can make amendments from the floor.
Right.
That doesn't mean you can't speak to an issue. And if 450 people showed up and said, we want the teacher's aides retained, X, Y, Z, anything, would that have a huge impact on the board? Well, yeah. Would it mean that, that my wife as an individual voter or Mary as an individual voter can make an amendment from the floor? No. Would that mean that the board wouldn't make it, seeing a huge amount of public input? I think we probably would, I think I probably would.
I think if there's a quorum, amendments, certainly amendments can be made from the floor.
From the floor, yeah.
And I, the voting body can direct.
Yes.
The board and the superintendent to add money back into its budget. I don't believe.
Or reduce it.
Or reduce it, that's correct. But I do, I don't think, you clarified this for me. I don't think that the voting body can say, well, we want to add all of the aides back at Matthew Thornton. We want to add all of the aides back at the North School.
If there was a quorum, they can.
If there's not a quorum.
Specific people?
Well, no, not specific. They can include it back in the budget.
That's exactly right.
Because I actually.
They can add to the budget.
Right, they can add to the budget.
Chairman of the, the school board, because I had, I've been getting lots of questions about emails and what's going on and this and that. And to clarify, if, if you stand up and say, I want to add $200,000, would be positive, people are gonna add to the school budget, or cut $200,000, that does not mean these specific things are going to be.
Correct.
That's correct.
However, if you stand up and make a specific amendment that says, I want $100,000 cut from the food service department, and that amendment passes, the school board now has to go back and figure out, what do we do with minus 100,000? If you say, cut 100,000, Nate can go back to the board and say, where minus this, what do we do?
Right.
Teacher, an aide, and kind of janitor, or we will push off paving Moose Hill or whatever.
The corollary to that is exactly how a lot of sports teams get funded. It goes to the voters, can we have $1,500 for an assistant lacrosse coach? Something like that, can we have X number of dollars to build a baseball field? So I would, I don't have the law in front of me, but it sounds right. It sounds like you'd be able to do that in reverse.
If it's specific.
Yes.
And, and that's what a lot of people don't understand.
Including for personnel?
Yes.
I think that you could go, well, again, we've hired, we've funded lacrosse coach positions. We funded, we funded various.
I know, but those are under separate articles, right?
Well, right, but, but I think that a motion from the floor would have the same parameters around it as a warrant article put on by petition.
To, to back up and cross, or on the town side, because it's, deliberative session and town meeting are fairly similar, but not just basically because of the quorum. A few years ago, someone made an amendment to cut X amount from someone's pay in town. It didn't go over very big. And after a lot of discussion, it was presented that we can cut $32,000 from the budget. But it's from the budget, doesn't necessarily mean it's this one particular person. You can't zero it down to people, but you can zero it down to departments and, and services that the town people want. If they want to keep the aides, they should be able to keep the aides. Because honestly, if they say, we want to keep this, and the school district turns around and says, well, we're gonna, we're gonna do this instead of that, your vote wasn't worth a lot. a lot.
So if they said, we want to cut $32,000 from the town manager's budget, lying, they could have done that, but they can't say a specific person?
Right.
In that particular situation.
Right.
And because the amendment wasn't made correctly.
Correctly. But I mean, so to go back to the school, if I'm, you know, should there be 500 people there? I can't talk anyway. I have to sit up on the podium and be quiet.
You can talk.
Well, I like the job.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
I like the job!
I agree that you can talk.
I know I can talk.
I'll make a motion.
No, 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 I know I can talk.
I'll second it.
No, no, no.
I'll sit in your seat. I'd be right.
I know I can talk. I choose not to, because I do appreciate being able to listen. I think that's a huge benefit that I have, that I have this self-imposed listening.
Okay.
But anyway, should I decide to break that self-imposed listening thing and talk? And there are 500 people there. I could say, I am in, I want, you know, I want to put 100 and whatever, $2,000 back in the budget specifically for aides in the schools? And you think that that would be-
I believe that's correct.
That would pass.
But I don't, but I don't think you could say that I want to put $100,000 back in to rehire Mrs. Douglas.
Right, right, right.
And Mrs. Johncous.
Right, right.
$100,000?
Hey, raise hands.
Salvation!
I'll go there.
You get the health benefits, right?
Not to beat this, but a few years ago, at the deliberative session, we didn't have a quorum, I believe Paul Margolin made a motion to cut $150,000. It was followed by a motion by Steve Young to cut out. Paul's motion was just to cut money, to reduce it. I believe it was to cut, it might have been to. In the end, the reason that that motion failed is because it was not specific. And what the Board at the time wanted was a specific, they wanted to know exactly where that money would be cut from. They didn't want for Nate to be able to go back and just cut it from anywhere.
Okay.
And I believe that was personnel?
I'm sorry, I wasn't on the Board at the time.
So, well, let me ask you a question then. Do you all feel that as Board members, you should be able to say to the superintendent, I want you to cut $100,000 from this line item? Or do you feel that you should trust him, you know, to decide where the best place to cut?
You asked for both.
Yeah.
You asked for both. I don't think that a Board can just say, gee, I think that you should go and take the, you know, the funds for the aides, or, you know, cut up an assistant coach position. I don't think that's appropriate. I think certainly they have to have dialogue. I mean, we have principals, we have assistant principals, we have a superintendent, we have a Board. They work together to govern the district as a whole.
I believe that you should be able to, as a Board, give specific direction, if it were to be appropriate.
Right.
And it may be some special circumstances where it is. Other direction may be just bottom line, by department, look, we need to challenge you to reduce it by X, see what you can do here, et cetera. But certainly, if appropriate, and that would be on a case-by-case basis, in my opinion, as to what is appropriate. Certain circumstances could come up, they could arise, and that people need to be able to, the Board member needs to be able to give specific direction, because the Board feels that in the best interest of the people who voted them there, this is the direction we need to go in, we need to do something here. So from that standpoint, I think specificity would be required.
Glenn, did you want to say something?
I think the Board should be able to make some recommendations. I think one of the things where I'm seeing it from is, at my company, we have a Board of Directors, and we have a CEO, and the Board of Directors oddly doesn't always come from your field. Sometimes they come from other fields. And they'll bring up things that we, as a company, that we know what we're doing, this is our specialty, and we'll look at our, and we'll scratch our heads, what's the Board coming up with? But what a question like that does is it makes us come back, and it makes our CEO come back and say, I understand you want this product by April. Well, listen, it's February, it's not gonna happen. And that Board member says, well, in my company, we can do it. Well, you make coffee cups. Great. And I don't even know who's on our Board, because they're way up there. But for the School Board to come up and say, we would like to do this, Nate comes back and says, these are all the reasons why we can't do it. And a lot of times, what I see is Nate comes back and says, this is what we're gonna do. And I don't see a lot of back-and-forth discussion. I don't see people coming up saying, this is why we need the aides. I don't see a union rep in there saying, and oddly, you see a lot of the opposite on the Town side. You cut firemen, you've got 10 firemen in the audience, this is why we need this, this and this. I don't see it, and I haven't seen it for a long time on the School Board side. I'm probably one of the few residents that attends a School Board meeting since 2005.
You definitely are.
So why do you think that is?
I really don't, I don't understand, and I had a conversation with a School Board member after the last public hearing, I just don't understand, why is nobody here? And we were both a little confused. And he actually said, you know, I can count on two hands the number of emails I've gotten after being on the Board. And I was like, I don't get it. We need to work to bring people in and get feedback, because no one here, and none of the current School Board members, I don't want people that just make decisions based on what we perceive. I mean, we haven't heard, and cut the band director will get a lot of people there, but you need feedback. I would really like to see people at the meeting saying, this is what I want, and this is what I don't want.
Yeah, you want to make sure that, in fact, what you have is, to the maximum extent practicable, that at a meeting, you have the maximum number of people present to have a good cross-section of voters present to make changes. That's my opinion, and I'll go out on a limb here, barring any legal decision on a quorum. I believe in a quorum, right? I think it's debatable whether it's 500 or perhaps might be better is the capacity of the cafeteria at the school, less maybe 15 or 20%. So you have a reasonable number that is attainable.
We, I helped put on a ballot last year, 350.
You did, you did. In fact, I remember specifically arguing for a quorum. And in general, let me, if I can take a minute, I'd like to explain why. You know, I think it's important, number one, that every single person should be given a chance to actually talk and discuss whatever's on their mind at any meeting.
Yep.
Right? In fact, I applaud, I welcome, and I want that input, Glenn's point, without that input, you're kinda shooting in the dark in terms of the limited emails you receive, and the questions on the street. You kinda get a feel for what you think the people want, but when you have a body of people present, right, you get a real good understanding. You may have a handful of people show up that, you know, they may want to have something done to a budget, and I understand, that's great. But let's make sure, before any large changes are made to any budget, I think it should be a cross-section, if you will, a statistically significant sample of the 17,000 voters that we have registered in this town, last number I heard, so that you don't just have a handful of people able to make dramatic changes. Now, people have argued the constitutionality of that. I would argue that, in fact, in the state constitution, Article 20 is a quorum that constitutes, what constitutes a quorum for the House? Article 37 of the Constitution constitutes, what makes a quorum for the Senate? It's required at the meetings for elected officials to have a quorum. Why is that? Why is that? Because you want to make sure that just a limited few are not making the point, right? They're not making decisions for the majority. Only, people who show up at a meeting need to be able to speak, they need to be able, if you have a quorum, great, let's make changes, do whatever you need to do, but let's make sure it's a significant sample of the cross-section of voters. Let's make certain that, in fact, you have a number that's significant enough so that when the vote comes down, it's a good representation of who are those 17,000 voters. Because you have a lot of people who can't show up, and if I could finish, and if you could, I just want to make sure that, in fact, you know, barring, like I said, any legal decision to the contrary, of course, we'd oblige and do whatever we have to do. But the arguments against, there have been cases, in fact, the LGC actually-
Local Government Center.
Yeah, the New Hampshire Local Government Center has written, in fact, cites a number of cases for and against quorums, alright? So there is some precedence, alright? One of the purposes of a democratic government is to instill lawmaking power in the people rather than grant authority to one or two individuals. Understandably, a Board is a few individuals, but they were elected to office, they took an oath of office. If you have just a few people coming in that may or may not have taken any oath, what guarantee do we have that that is a true representation of the limited few? It goes on. It says, planning boards may have between only five and nine members, depending on a form of local government. The Board, you know, you're trying to defend and have an insurance policy that basically limits the ability of just a select couple make dramatic changes. And I'm all for making sure that democracy is, in fact, the one, that the item that prevails. It prevails when you have democracy in action. To me, democracy in action is have the maximum extent practicable, attend and vote.
Todd, thank you. We are running out of time, I'm gonna give you a chance to-
Just quick, because I've been following this for a long time. The Charter Commission last year came up with a lot of new information. I understand the arguments. I actually went to the School Board back in September, because I had a concern of what is going to happen at the deliberative session, which is next Friday night, if this is challenged. During the Charter Commission, there was definite questions brought up, that there's a question about it being legal. I know the voters voted three times, I know it was reviewed supposedly by the state three times, it was reviewed by the state.
It was submitted to the state.
Whether or not they read it is questionable, in my opinion. When I went to the School Board in September, I said, I want to know what Plan B is, because I want to know what's gonna happen if someone stands up with 100 people and says, you can't do this. What happens to the vote? What happens to the ballot? Do we need a special election? Back then, I was told there would be more discussion. There wasn't any more discussion. A lawsuit gets filed, now we're being sued. As far as the legality of the quorum, some of the documents were presented to the court. Merrimack, actually, a few years ago, wanted to put in a quorum. They specifically cited Londonderry and its 500-member quorum. They wanted to do the same thing. The AG said, sorry, you can't do it. Londonderry's the only town with a quorum. That aside, voters voted three times to keep it. We're kind of in a sticky situation now, because-
Absolutely.
Londonderry doesn't have the ability to really govern itself. Not being a home-rule state, Concord says you can do this, this and this. You can't pass a law or have a law that Concord says is illegal. So there's still a question out there, what happens if we can't have it? And that question, up until the last School Board meeting, still hasn't been answered.
I would say, well, yeah. What happened was, when you raised the point, and it was a good one at the time, and I didn't have the answer, and nobody on the Board did, you know, one of the questions that's been asked is how we've spent $16,000, $17,000 in legal expenses, starting back last summer, on a lawsuit that was filed in November, October, somewhere around there. The answer to that is, when the issue came up, is when we started getting legal advice. One of the things that we were told is that what happens with the process will depend a lot on the judge's ruling. When the case went to court and the judge ruled, was when we finally had a sense of what happens afterward. And that is that any remedy is expected to be proscriptive, meaning looking forward, following, following the date of its implementation rather than retroactive. So that was something that we honestly didn't have an answer to, and we started looking at and couldn't have the answer to until a number of facts were in place. So that's where that goes.
So where it is right now is, on Friday night, when we have the deliberative session, no matter what happens, no matter if anybody gets up and challenges the quorum, whatever vote, whatever budget gets moved to the ballot is the budget that's moved to the ballot.
That is our understanding, that is our understanding based on current law. Whether a higher judge would change that-
Right.
I don't know, but we have to work within some set of rules. And the set of rules that we have to work in is the law as it exists at the time of the meeting.
Okay.
And that was my point back in September. It is assumed that that vote will stand. No one has come back and definitely said, if it's challenged, here is what will happen. And I believe, because the question-
You mean at the deliberative session on-
If someone stands up and cries foul because it's 499, what happens?
And we already have, you know, something in the paper that says something will do that.
That was, in fact, answered. Way back when, the people filing the lawsuit started by asking, by writing a letter to the moderator, John Michaels, saying, will you promise to allow this? And he said, no, he won't. It won't be allowed, it's out of order. So I think that answers your question. If somebody makes a motion and there's not a quorum, the quorum requirement remains in effect, the motion is ruled out of order.
And as far as I understand it, because in September, they said, the School Board can't go forward until there's an aggrieved party.
Right.
Friday night, there's a possibility there'll be an aggrieved party.
Yes.
There could be multiple that go to the AG's office.
Absolutely.
What happens to the vote?
That would be what the-
Do we freeze it?
That would be what the AG takes to court, and a court tells us. I mean, let me make another comparison for you, an analogy. So far, in the federal court system, two federal courts have held that the new healthcare law is constitutional. Two have held that it's not constitutional. Ultimately, it will get to the highest court of resolution, and they'll make the final determination.
So in the meantime-
What happens then, I don't know.
In the meantime, it's in effect.
In the meantime, it's in effect until somebody tells us it's not. We don't have the authority to countermand it.
That budget would go to the voters.
As far as I know, aside from what the School lawyer is saying, is it will be in effect, but there hasn't been any ruling-
Right.
-to say this, and that's all I wanted back then, because I know the way some things go in town, and some people are gonna, unconstitutional, and on and on we go. I just wanted to know back then-
Right.
-what would happen Friday night. As far as I know, there's still a question, what happens Friday night?
And part of that $16,000 went to asking that question, and it went to me and others asking the lawyer, okay, can we get a declaratory judgment? Can we get this settled right now? And the answer comes back, no, because of the aggrieved party situation you mentioned. So some of it, I'm afraid that's what Donald Rumsfeld would call known unknowns. We just have to go forward and see how the process shakes out. But all I can say is that I'm sure that those of us on the Board, and those of us who are petitioning the court for a remedy in this, are acting based on goodwill and their best understanding of what the process is, and we just have to see how it turns out.
Yeah, I think, obviously, what happens is that the law in existence at the time of the occurrence is, in fact, what law is followed. It's not gonna be retroactive or something like that. So whatever, my opinion, I'm not a lawyer, but whatever-
But I play one on TV.
Right. I play a doctor.
Yeah. So, you know, whatever happens, I would think that the rules as they exist at the time of the meeting, to John's point, are exactly what would be followed. And then what would happen is, any aggrieved party would file suit, follow up accordingly. And then if, in fact, the judgment came down at some future point that said, and when it comes down, whether on the legality of it, I think from that point forward, a judge would decide exactly how that would be treated. Now, whether they would retroactively look at it, I'm not sure I know of any precedents that would do such a thing in any law.
And I don't play a lawyer on TV either, but that was my question back then. And I told the School Board, I believe it's irresponsible to allow this question to go to the deliberative. And we're there.
Right, but I don't think they had a choice.
But the question isn't going to the deliberative.
The School Board decided to fight, and not, what I would have said is, I don't care how we work this out, guys, we need to get an answer before.
Right.
Well, of course, the School Board decided to fight. Well, of course, the school board decided to fight. Three times, voters have said that this is the way we want the charter to be done. Our job is to reflect the articulated interest of the voters. The voters have articulated that as recently as last year. So yeah, of course, we're going to defend that.
I think my question would be, why are people not satisfied with that? The voters have spoken, and we're spending money, $18,000. You want to know where your money for aides could be? There's, you know, a small piece of it. You know, like, to your point, what you were saying earlier, do we pave the parking lot at Matthew Thornton, or do we have aides? Do we spend $18,000 on a lawsuit, or do we buy recorders for the fourth grade for their music education? Those, that's my perspective.
And I understand, all I wanted back in September is to know what we're going to do and what happens, because I didn't want this blowing up, and we're hearing.
What would you do?
Okay. I'm so sorry to have to cut this off, but you guys have to be over at town.
They're not going to start without us.
Yeah, well, it's true, they're not going to start without you. I'm not sure about the tape situation, though, because I think they were expecting about an hour, and we're already over an hour.
Okay.
And I know that this is a very hot topic, so I hope you'll continue this discussion when you get over there, and we'll see it, you know, maybe people will watch both shows.